Call the school committee to order, to meeting to an order, excuse me. Salute to the flag, Mr. Horgan, please.
Flag allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. School committee chair report, there is, I have nothing to offer this evening. Resource committee?
Resource and school building needs will be meeting on May 2nd.
You said school building needs as well, Mr. Stevens.
Right, next one, yeah.
Alright, thank you. Policy committee, well, she is not, Ms. Cragan is not here unless...
Aiden?
Yeah, we have a few policies that go through second readings tonight. And those are the same ones that we had previously, and I believe, I believe we've all gotten a look from these from last meeting. Actually, excuse me, I want to correct that. So you'll see that they're at the second reading, and we waived the first reading for a few of them because they were just housekeeping policies, basic procedures and standards that we're going to go through. We can go through them one by one, but maybe we should just save that until the vote comes up.
Yes.
They're very basic housekeeping policies, so by all means, look over them.
I think, I'm going to couple maybe be tabled tonight.
Certainly, yep.
In discussion.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
There's one about public comment that we needed some more topics on.
Any questions or comments?
So we're going to have a chance to ask questions?
Yeah, when they come up, yeah.
Student support committee, Ms. LaBelle Pierce.
Nothing new to report.
Thank you. Any questions? School personnel?
We have tonight, we have an executive session.
Well, we have the superintendent, we do not. I was told, we don't require, do we require executive session tonight?
I believe you were going to attend executive session.
I asked Xena that this afternoon, this morning. He said, no. I don't know, what are we discussing? Is it negotiations or something?
No, it's just the superintendent's contract.
But that's an open meeting.
Yeah, that's...
Yeah, not executive session.
Yeah, yeah.
Right. Alright. Personnel, okay, none. Executive committee, I have nothing to report, well, other than, of course, we'll be taking up the superintendent's contract this evening. Student report?
Alright, so our last meeting was April 1st, and since then, we've had multiple things down in our high school. The first thing was the state fair, which was the 11th, 12th, and 13th. So we had Ciara Perry, a senior, come from the last meeting and do a song, so like a little sneak peek of what was at the state fair. So, other than that, we had appreciation for Assistant Principal Week, which was the 8th through the 12th. So we had a couple organizations kind of focused towards appreciation towards them. Other than that, I attended the student advisory meeting, and in that, we had several topics all related to how we can improve students from skipping class and doing class cuts and stuff like that. So we talked a lot about how we can have students avoid doing that because that really affects attendance and then their knowledge that, you know, they gain in classrooms. Other than that, we had our report cards that were passed out on the 12th, which was the day before spring break, which was the 13th through the 22nd. And other than that, I think we just had a couple upcoming events. So, these are the pop rally, talent show, spring concert, and the prom. And then graduation for seniors is May 31st, and we will have awards for alumni awards and the senior night awards. Yeah, it's good, it's all good.
Questions?
May's going to be a busy month.
Yes, yeah.
We always have a good turnout for the alumni awards, and I hope you'll be there.
Yes, yes, yep.
And the senior, senior night. That'll be bring...
Yeah, it's said to be the busiest month for seniors, especially since it's all like wrapping up everything that they've been doing, and exams for juniors and seniors and some sophomores, they take AP exams as well. So that's all getting the fees in, getting the registration, everything in. So, this is, this is going to be a really stressful month.
Great. Okay. Item three on the agenda, approve the minutes from the previous school committee, April 1st, 2019.
Motion?
Motion made?
Seconded.
Seconded. To approve the minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposition?
Mr. Xena's here.
Yes, I see him. Mr. Xena, we're not, a conversation we had today, executive session is not necessary?
I don't think it's necessary.
Okay, alright, thank you. Communications, I have none. I don't know if any of the members of the committee have any communications they want to share. Is there anyone here requesting or wishing to provide public comment? I see none. Moving on, superintendent's report, Mr. Jokela.
Okay, good evening. So, first item on our agenda is the proposed field trip that the Pittsburgh High School Band is planning for Disney World. So, with Tabitha Greenlee's here, I'd like to have Tabitha come forth.
Yeah, so we've already submitted a proposal to you in terms of our expectation of what this trip is going to look like. The idea, for me, always traveling is that bands and ensembles of excellence travel. They go places and they show off. And they receive amazing feedback from these larger performance venues, places like Festival Disney, which have clinicians and adjudicators from all over the country who are leaders in their field that give feedback to our students. And I think it's one of the best opportunities that they have as performers in order to receive feedback from other adjudicators. And we travel every year, whether it be locally, someplace in state. Like this Friday, we're going to Six Flags to participate in Music in the Parks at Six Flags New England. And last year, no, the year before, we went to Hershey Park for another Music in the Parks Festival. And it's just a different opportunity for us to have in order to receive that kind of feedback. Yeah. So right now, the proposed dates are Thursday, April 23rd, 2020, through Monday, April 27th, 2020. That's the, my assumed April vacation, the weekend closing of April vacation, based on the date of the Boston Marathon.
How would they pay for, did each student have to pay his own?
Right, so the idea of us getting approval more than a year in advance is that students would pay incremental amounts per month, and if we can reserve our slots sooner rather than later, then the price would be more, the price would be better for us in the summer as opposed to waiting until the fall or winter to book all of our seats for flights and such. But yes, we do a substantial amount of fundraising and throughout the course of the year, but students would be responsible for a portion of the cost.
Make sure the committee knows when these fundraising events are happening.
Absolutely.
You know, we can, we can help. Certainly, I can with some people that...
That'd be wonderful.
Would be thrilled in helping out, so that's a substantial amount of money.
Well, it is, but when you look at...
But I think it's a great opportunity.
Right, when you look at what's included, so that is, and this is just an initial proposal based on the amount of students that are projected for me to have for next year. That number could be reduced if there are more students, and...
What is that number, Ms. Cragan?
So right now, this is, the proposal is based on 30 students attending.
Thirty, okay.
If there were more, the numbers could potentially be less than that because you're getting a bigger, a bigger bulk discount.
And if there aren't 30 that can go, so is there like sort of a number that's a cutoff number, or?
No.
Like a minimum number?
No. So, the last time that we went was five years ago. It's typical that high school ensembles do a larger trip of this sort every three years, three or four years. That basically means that any student involved in the high school ensemble would take a larger trip during their course of time over four years. Ideally, it would be great for us to get onto a three-year cycle as opposed to five, but that's the last time that we went was in the spring of 2015. So no, there's no minimum. I mean, the last time I took 15 kids, because that's how many were able to make the payments, and the band parents gave them a good amount of help in order to make that possible. So no, I mean, I'll take however many are coming, is this the simple solution. And by, by telling people a year in advance, I'm hopeful that any student who is currently involved in our VIP band program, as long as they are, they continue with us through next school year, they would be eligible to attend Festival Disney with us in the spring.
And is it open just to, it's only the band, it's not your band and chorus, right?
I don't know if the choir, if the choir will also go. It's something we can add, another ensemble. The choir hasn't necessarily made, the last time that they went on a larger trek was to Hershey Park. So that was in the spring of 2017 that we did, did that trek. So, yeah, usually there, I have a, I have had a slightly larger turnover in terms of the students that come in through the choir. So the consistency of like kids that are staying for four years isn't, isn't the same as it is in the band, yeah. But it isn't un, like, I'm not unwilling to take them in addition.
So, could I ask another?
Sure, go ahead.
The participation in the Disney Performing Arts Workshop, what is that?
Oh, this is an amazing, amazing opportunity. So when we do the, this, the like Performing Arts instrumental workshop, we have a three-hour session with an adjudicator, and during that time, they work on pieces that they bring of Disney music and that's arranged, and we talk about it, and they do a whole kind of clinic on how you do when you're in a studio, how you record, and then they record the band after those three hours of that workshop, and then they sync it up to a scene from a Disney movie. So, we went, last time, we did Part of Your World. And it's something that we're like not, we're not supposed to...
Because your band playing and the movie's...
And the movie is being, yes.
That's cool.
Yeah, it's very, very cool. But really, it's like, I mean, that's the end result, but the fact that, that they're working with a professional musician, you know, another music educator like me who is there for three hours, that's an incredible opportunity for them.
How many other schools go down for this event? Is it just your group, or are there multiple?
Oh, heavens no. There are sometimes hundreds of schools at any given weekend, at any given performance. So I think that the last time that we were there, on the day that we performed and were adjudicated and then attended the award ceremony, there were, I think, 30 to 40 ensembles that were there. I can double check, but I think there were about 30, which is great. And we would have the opportunity to hear those other bands perform while we are there.
And they get to interact with the other?
Yes.
Band members from other?
Yeah, there's usually like a dance party, and...
Thanks, thanks.
The last time, we missed the dance party because I was insistent we go and see Fantasmic. So, that's the truth.
Mr. Garner going to be the videographer for this event? I vote for Mr. Garner to vote.
Oh, yes, okay.
Alright. We'll find, we'll find the money for you, Chad, but down there, because we want to see all this, we're not going to be able to see it.
Wow.
So we want to see, you know...
Because it's not like kids have any video equipment.
Chad could be a chaperone.
Okay, that's good. Can you put together for me just a, what the benefits of this would be? You know what I mean? What, some of the things they're going to be involved in when they go down to Disney?
Sure.
You know, and for people that want to contribute that don't know what it's all about.
Okay, I can do that.
To be able to say to them, this is a great opportunity for you to help out.
Sure.
This is what they're going to be exposed to, if you will.
Easily.
It's more than just a class trip to Disney World. It's a lot more, it's a lot more than that.
Absolutely.
I think it's a great learning experience to, to travel, to do what you just described, but also have the opportunity to meet with their peers and talk about music at different schools and what they do.
Absolutely. I mean, this is the reason that I, that I take our students to competitions and to festivals, is because of those opportunities, that they are able to receive feedback from judges, that they are receiving a clinic of some sorts, or working with a new music educator who's telling them what they do well and what they think that they can improve, and working with them to see how they can improve, because that's my goal for them always as musicians, is to be perpetually striving for something more. So no, it's not just, I'm asking for five days to go to Disney.
No.
Right, right. But that's important, and jazz it up too. Give me the present, excuse the pardon. But, you know, flashy, make it flashy, so I can show these bankers...
Fine.
You know, wake them up a little, you know what I mean?
The man's good at that, you know.
We have, we have a great understanding.
Listen, if you, if you want and you need to have like a flash mob of the entirety of the band come marching in when you're asking...
That's a great idea.
...because of their money. You tell me where and when, we'll be there.
Alright. The field house, no, okay, good, good. Thank you.
Before Ms. G steps down, can we just, I just have to say thank you so much for all the work that you did for the musical, and it was just another real fun, crazy weekend of performance, but beyond that, all the months that you put in preparation. And I think you really exposed the kids to great music, and it pushes them out of their limits a lot, I think, and that's really important. And obviously, they, they really rise to the occasion for that, and it was nice to see Superintendent Jokela as a guest. I mean, you were really, you were very good.
Very good.
Because I saw all the cameos.
Very, very good, yes, yes.
It was an unspeaking role, just to be clear.
But there are no small parts.
There were, but my voice was heard to a mass audience, right?
That is true, there are no small parts though.
Just your presence on the stage, Mr. Superintendent.
As we always explain, that I always explain that, you know, if you, every single person is important if they are on the stage. And even if they're not on the stage, every single one of them is important because they all create the, the effect of the scene. And so if everyone is not completely engaged in that moment on that stage, then the scene falls apart. So, your non-speaking role was just as important, I'll have you know. And you did a great job, yes, a real natural.
But I think, you know, for Tabitha, that's the first weekend of vacation, right? And so a lot of people really, like, walk out of the building and then you're done. And, you know, you're still there and you're working hard throughout that whole weekend, and Judy Greenlee's as well, as the pianist accompanimentist. It was just, it's just a real, we're really lucky that we have you working with the system.
Thank you. Yeah, they did a really great job. I'm very proud, very proud of all those students again.
Do we need to vote on...
Well, that'll come up. That'll come up.
Prove the recommendation, that's the first thing on the action item.
I just wanted to echo, because it's already been said, congratulations and great job for the performances last weekend. And also, just, I guess for future notice, if there's any other fundraising opportunities that are coming up too, that are involved in this, please let us know. And I don't know if I could also echo that to Mr. Superintendent, but if we, for the student support meeting, or committee rather, any other fundraising opportunities for student, you know, expenditures that aren't, that the students have to cover themselves, I thought that committee would be a good place for that to be funneled through and brought to the general committee for any ways that we can help with that. So I just wanted to make that note. But again, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great, best of luck.
Okay, moving on, we have an abbreviated agenda tonight. So we have some donations. First, on the list is $100 from Wegmans to support students at South Street attending Special Olympics. Then we have $400 from Paul Fontaine for some, to cut up the cost of T-shirts for the Special Olympics students at McKay. And we have one grant tonight to accept, and that's the FY20 Comprehensive School Health Services Grant for $165,000. This is the 11th year of that grant, that's funded by DTH. And lastly, you have a Pearson royalty check. This goes back to some work that Bonnie Bear, CMAC, and some of the ELL staff did several years ago, and we licensed some of the work to Pearson. And over the years, we've received several thousand dollars of royalties, and the checks now are usually about this size. And then, policy, Aiden, do you want to?
Certainly. So, there's seven policies in your packet tonight, fellow school committee members. Two of them are just the approved policies from our last meeting, policy 5116 and 5101, the school entrance age policy and the student attendance policy. So those are already approved, and you can kind of put those aside. The other five are very, well, I should say, four are very basic and straightforward, they're housekeeping items that we waived the first reading of, which was our prerogative, just being housekeeping procedures. And we're on to the second reading, so they'll be approved after tonight. If, we want to just go down, starting from the first one down, so this agenda starts, it's action item 1144, so we'll start with policy 6502.
Right.
This is the time and location of regular school committee meetings. The only note was adding, the first line of the regulation states how many months we're going to have on the first and third Monday. So how many months we could have two meetings? And we added March to that list because, if you recall, last year, there was a lot of snow days, and it would have been helpful to have another meeting in that month to talk about the blizzard bags and the different remedies for that problem. So we just thought that was an easy fix. So we're just adding two meetings to March, and that's what's being added to that policy. And I also found a typo that says, "And on the first Monday only in September, December, January, and February," but you'll see, February's mentioned twice. So I don't think that wording would be contradictory, I think it can just stand, just, it sounds a little silly, but the, the result is the same. So, that's the first policy. The next policy is one that came accompanied with Spalding versus Natick, the case that we have in our case, in our, in our packet. So this was about the policy regarding what public comments can be concerned with. And our policy has some concerning language that we need to, to work on. So that's going to be tabled for tonight. I think that will be a separate vote. Once we get to these action items, we'll vote to table this for another reading.
Says it's procedures during meetings?
This is procedures during meetings. This is about, you know, the public comment was the biggest one, and if you see line three, persons addressing the committee should refrain from reading long statements, you know, wording like that can't be included. That's two, this case, you'll see that wording like that would be in violation of this ruling. So we're going to need to change some of those, some of that wording and, and work on that in policy, and we'll bring that back when we have that done.
I think I mentioned to Sally that, once you go back and rework it, send it to Glenn Kucha.
Right.
Who I think, Mike Long, who sent us, I think he works for, does work for the MASC, you know, he, Mike Long, and they usually present at the school committee meeting in November. So they'll have it checked before.
Absolutely, yeah, because that's a very important policy, and I think Mr. Walsh wants to be trusted.
Just an item on policy number one, this written request to be placed, not to he placed. There's a typo there?
Pardon me? What was it?
Roman numeral one, number one.
Yeah.
This written request to should be be placed, not he placed.
Sure.
And then also, I guess, I guess when we come up with this later, I have, I had made some revisions to item four on that in terms of the limit of the public comment period.
Yes, right, and that was the one adjustment that we actually wanted to have, was moving it from five minutes to three minutes, but then there's a lot of other wording that we found.
Thank you, yeah.
And my, my recommendation is going to be to, to limit it to two minutes, so it coincides with the city council standard, which has been...
Even better.
Well, I have to, I mean, did you all, on this court case, this Natick case, I'm kind of curious where the time limit comes in, because it seems to suggest that that would be a violation of people's freedom of speech.
Well, the time limit wasn't, in the purview of that case, that wasn't something that the, the judge was looking at in this case. This was more about the policies regarding the content of the actual objections that are in the public comment. So, but to kind of add on to that, I, I also am in trouble by, by that. I would like to keep it at three. I understand that these can be, you know, whatever, three minutes can be a long time when someone's, whatever, making a very critical remark, but I, I think that's important, I think that's a criticism that...
Aiden, what I would suggest is the policy committee, you go back and...
Yeah, we'll have that over, but...
Discuss it and come back with your recommendations.
And any notes that you guys have regarding the minutes or anything, obviously can be taken into account when we go over it.
But you are going to bring that up?
Absolutely, absolutely. And we'll have, as a committee, we'll have time to talk about that on a later date. The next one is special emergency meetings, so this is about if there's, I don't know what kind of instances would be under this purview, but when we need to have an emergency meeting, the procedures that go along with that, what, the big change that we had was the agenda for this meeting will have to be topics that are of immediate concern, whatever that concern is. Anyone, I believe, can call an emergency meeting. I was confused myself about the wording of requested, I believe there's also a typo in this one, of topics of immediate concern, comma, I don't know if that should be a period or if it should be requested by the school committee, I'm not sure. Perhaps that should be something we tabled too, just to touch that up, because that seems confusing to me, that second paragraph. But, I think you get the, the point on that one. The next one was the student member of the school committee, so this would be Ethan and Har. These, there was a whole procedure that we were, a school committee member was supposed to be part of the interview process, and a whole, you know, elaborate proceeding that was supposed to go through. How we've been doing it is that the principal of the high school has his own process and picks the students. So this is just completely simplified to saying, we're going to have two high school members sit on the committee, and everything that's part of the regulations of that is going to be in the purview of the school district to be what they've been doing.
Seems a few years ago, what we said we would have Mr. Roach recommend two.
Right.
And that's, here, it's a day high school student, but we actually had two, so we need to...
Okay.
Need to make a change.
That's a good point, it'll be two. But I guess the whole point of taking away all that proceeding was, just like you said, to put it in Mr. Roach's...
Put it in Mr. Roach to come up with the two students.
Right. So I guess we'll table that too and add into two students. That's unfortunate.
So are we looking at tabling three of these right now?
Yep, and that's...
What are we voting on?
And that's alright.
Alright.
So we're going to table the last three. So this, the middle three policies out of the five that we're voting on are going to be tabled.
Okay.
The first one, with the time and location of the two month, two in March, that can be approved tonight. And then the last one is Curriculum Articulation Committee. School committees don't have any responsibility over curriculum, so this committee...
Yes, they do. Yes, they do.
Okay.
If, if you're going to purchase new textbooks, those new textbooks need to be approved by the school committee.
Okay. Well, nonetheless, we found that this, we don't have a committee, we don't have a curriculum articulation committee, so this policy's...
No matter whoever it is, any, if a principal decides he's going to put in a whole new set of history books, that needs to be approved by the school committee. Sometimes we get a little lax on some of these things that work with curriculum and so forth, but it is up to the school committee to approve.
Okay.
It needs to be a recommendation that comes that they want to use a particular new series that's going to be a change in the curriculum, and those books need to be approved by the school committee. school committee.
I don't think they'll all be changed because those will still go to the committee as a whole, but this would be a subcommittee, correct? I think this is the, this is a specific committee that would be, that's not assembled that- Right. This doesn't exist. So, that's what we're talking about.
But the policy should be saying, you know, it shows which is part of mass general laws, that new textbook, curriculum textbooks would be approved by school committee.
I, I think it would be wise to have a committee because it would take time to look at it. I mean, it wouldn't, couldn't be presented here and do it justice.
I guess one other hiccup that I'll mention now is that this policy is from 1986, it didn't go through a second reading, so it's, there's not recorded as a second reading. I don't know if that was needed back then, but we just didn't think that this, this policy was, was relevant or being used, so we most, we voted to delete it. If we want to reform a-
I would like to give it more thought. That's, that's important, I think.
So, you, you don't need a policy when, you know, like I say, for the, for the textbooks, that's part of mass general law.
Right. So, that's not a policy that we have, and that's not what's being voted on today in any regards. This is just about the subcommittee, if I'm not mistaken.
All right. What do we, we want to vote on holding?
I'd like to comment just on, on, on some of the language on Item Number Two, Director of Chapter One, should that be Title One? And we don't have a Director of Special Needs?
I think that's just kind of wishing how dated this is.
Director of Special Needs would be your sped director.
Or Student Services. Like, I, I don't, I don't, it makes sense to delete this because it's, it's fiction.
Right.
Right? But I think whether there's, I mean, would it be an item maybe for another meeting just to kind of discuss how curriculum is developed, but, but that isn't, I mean, we, we aren't the ones who are, I mean, we do approve certain programs and certainly some like health-related programs especially, but in textbooks and materials, but we're not. When you were saying, Rosemary, that, you know, you'd like to see that committee, I, they, they have, like Paula's job basically is directing the curriculum development, right? So, maybe that could be a separate discussion about how that all, like how the soup kind of gets made or something, but I, I don't, that's not our part. So, I'm, I'm fine with deleting this because it doesn't really have any meaning in our current scheme.
Right. Like you said, it's, it's fiction in regards to this policy. But if those, like, those two notes were made, I mean, if we want to talk about having another policy that kind of is, you know, that's addressing your comments, we can do that, and we can bring that up in the next policy committee. But I guess just for the votes today, I guess I'll make a motion to table Agenda Items 45 to 47, Policies 6502.01, 6511, and 6601.01. Table those to be addressed in subcommittee and then to be brought back to the general committee once they've been edited.
A second?
All in favor?
I'm, I'm, I'm losing you.
Sorry. On the second page of the action items, if you need me to-
Please.
Please. Yeah. So, I'm making a motion to table Policies 6502.01, the second policy that's being addressed tonight, and then, which is Action Item Number, or I guess Paul, Agenda Item Number 11-1145.
Right. That's, that's, yeah, let's refer to it that way.
Okay, fine, sure. And the next two, 19-1146 and 19-1147. Those three policies will be brought back to the policy subcommittee, and once they're edited, we'll bring them to the general committee to be voted on-
Right.
-and discussed.
So, Mr. Harkin, your motion is to table those three items?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes.
Motion made. Do we have a second?
I second it.
Motion made and seconded to table 19-1145, 19-1146, 19-1147. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor? If I could just make one quick comment? Yep. I'd just like to thank the policy committee for this excellent work they're doing because this is work that hasn't been done in years, and to dig through these policies and bring them up and try to straighten them out, that's so, thank you. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it, absolutely.
So, do you wish to bundle the remainder of the action items?
Make a motion.
Well, excuse me, one of them is superintendence contract.
Okay.
So, we'll, we'll-
Leave that.
Bundle all, 19-1139 up through, and including 19-1151 with the exception, holding out All those in favor?
Aye.
Well, wait a minute, did I get a second?
You got to bundle them first, and then we vote on them.
Make a motion, we bundle them.
All right.
A second?
Motion made, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. So, we're bundling those, as I just stated. Motion to accept?
Motion to accept.
Second?
Second. Motion made, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It is unanimous. Committee wished to take up 19-1150. Except the recommendation to approve the contract for Robert M. Jokel, the superintendent of schools commencing on July 1, 2019, and ending on July 30th, 2023.
Make a motion to accept.
Motion made to accept. Any discussion?
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Is there any discussion, members of the committee?
Just like to say, good luck. Keep up the good work.
All right. Motion made, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It is unanimous. Congratulations. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard, formally.
It's a long onboarding process.
Get acting out of there.
Well, yeah.
That's right.[1771.13]